I'll call the meeting to order of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors, October the 27th, 2021. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand and repeat the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is required in the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, individual with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Any members of the board have an agenda item they wish to add to the posted agenda?
No.
Seeing no responses, we will move on to the next item, is public comments. If anyone wishes to address the board on an item that's not already on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. I will recognize you. If anyone present here in the room, or if you are and you wish to address us now, you can stand up and go to the podium. If you're on Zoom, just use the raise hands feature, or turn on your video and wave your hand at me. I'll scan the pages here of participants, see if I see anybody waving. I don't. Okay. Oh, yes, go ahead. Introduce yourself and where you live, please.
Valerie Burnett, Top Trees Avenue. And I just wanted to thank the board for taking the time and effort to put letter forth to our senators and our representative regarding Build Back Better. Thank you so much for doing that.
And we wish to thank you also for writing the first draft of that letter and encouraging the board to take a stance on the issue. Any other public comments? Not, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the Housing Task Force Final Report. Supervisor Anita Tees, I believe you have the honor of introducing this topic. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. The Patent Township Housing Task Force is very pleased to bring you our report and recommendations to begin a renewed community focus on addressing housing needs. And I want to take a moment, especially for those who might be watching this on CNET now or in the future, to review the formation of our task force and introduce very briefly the members who have done the research and written the report. And then four of our members will share in narrating a PowerPoint that's been created by our task force co-chair Nicole Pollak. Nicole is our Patent Township Planner and a senior planner for the Center Regional Planning Agency. And then after that, I will introduce very briefly our recommendations for action. A year ago, the Board of Supervisors voted to establish the Patent Township Housing Task Force to research what is known as affordable housing, or workforce housing, or the newest term, which is attainable housing. And Nicole went out for citizens willing to serve, and 18 persons responded. All 18 were appointed to the task force, including every Patent Township resident who had applied. And the members represent a range of professions and civic service. They include township and regional planners, housing service providers, realtors, and real estate professionals, developers, elected officials, and persons who work in business, government, and for Penn State. Some of the task force have lived in Patent Township for more than 40 years, others less than a decade. And because housing issues transcend municipal boundaries, some live elsewhere in Central County and the Center Region. And these members have met monthly for educational presentations and have conducted research between the meetings. They form subcommittees on visioning, housing, and zoning. And because we'd like the public to see who is behind this report, I'm going to name their names, and we're going to try to have them zoom in with their pictures. We don't know how that'll go, but we'd like you to know who the members of this task force are. They are your neighbors, and they have worked for this last year to bring you this report. So I'll introduce first the Visioning Subcommittee. And if those folk, I don't know how CNET will do this, but if you would, they would turn on their videos. Kate Domico is our chair, Christina Bassett, Tony Buddha, Morgan Wassaconnes, and Betsy Whitman. And then for our Housing Subcommittee, Stephanie Fost and Andy Haynes are the co-chairs of that, with Kristen Swanacek, Sultan McGruder, Nicole Pollak, and Stephen Rogers. And then our Zoning Subcommittee, Rachel Fawcett is our chair, Andrea Pandolfi, Jim Payne, and Bill Studler are members. And now I'll turn it over to Nicole Pollak for our PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Betsy. I'm actually going to hand it right over to Stephanie, who's going to lead us off. Stephanie, can you hear us?
Yeah, welcome. And thank you all for your time together with us this evening. After 10 months of work by the group that Anita just introduced, I think we're all really looking forward to sharing the efforts of the task force. My name is Stephanie Fost. I have the opportunity to serve as the Director of Habitat for Humanity of Raiders County County. Tonight, joining me to speak and present to you the results of our time together over those last 10 months are Christina Bassett, a Patent Township resident and Ferguson Township Community Planner, Kristen Swanacek, a Patent Township resident and associate broker and division manager from PMI Residential, and Andrea Lee Pandolfi, Patent Township resident, commercial real estate appraiser, member of the Patent Township zoning board, and Center County. Tonight, we're going to spend time briefly, briefly, walking through the 100-plus-page report that the task force developed. I would truly encourage you to take some time to visit the document in its entirety on the township's webpage. We'll walk through the housing challenges that Patent Township faces, and the goals that the township must strive to achieve in order to be a place for all. You'll also hear how Patent Township has always been a place where forward thinking is the norm rather than the exception. As the next part of our presentation, you'll have the opportunity to hear from each of our subcommittees. We all know that the pandemic has changed life a bit, and Christina will discuss how we should do to the pandemic. The Visioning Subcommittee will aim to demonstrate the values of our community. Kristen will discuss the analysis of our current housing challenges through the work of the Housing Subcommittee. Our zoning Subcommittee findings will be presented by Andrea, where she'll outline information about our current zoning and other models available. Finally, you'll hear the committee's recommendations. Patent Township is facing a challenge much like the rest of Center County. Housing is becoming, or already is, unattainable for those who want to live here. I'm going to ask you to pause for a second and look at the slide that Nicole has up on the screen right now. It shows area median income. Where are you? What's your number on that grid? Where are your friends? Where are your family? Where are those young professionals that just graduated from Penn State who want to stay here? Where are the essential workers that have to commute significant distances to reach their place of work? Where are the senior citizens that want to live near their families and their service providers? If Patent Township truly wants to be a place for all, then Patent Township needs to be a place where people and resources are connected through attainable housing. Tonight, I would encourage you, as members of this community, your community, to be a part of this conversation. Contact the township and see how you can be a part. Patent Township has a history of forward thinking when it comes to housing. Think about Park Forest Village, I picture there on your left, the first large suburban development in the region that won a national award for its design. Think of Top Trees, where the first planned development of its kind in Pennsylvania. Think of the Commercial Transitional Zoning District that allowed Thompson Place, an affordable housing community, to exist. Finally, think back 10-ish years ago to 2011, 2014, when Patent Township residents voted to preserve green space. Patent Township has been an opportunity to be proactive and truly become a place for all, with a bit more forward thinking. Now, I'll pass it over to Christina.
Thank you, Stephanie. So the pandemic has had an impact on all of us. Pandemics historically expedite change, or current trends. The COVID-19 pandemic changed the way many of us live, go to school, or work. It emphasizes the value of our homes, our workers, and our community. Quarantining during the pandemic gave us a glimpse of the environmental impact of cars, and thus the importance of a greener society and more easily accessible community. The desire for walkability and connectivity via sidewalks or bike routes that are safe really grew. So with more people walking and biking, using curbside pickup or delivery, there tends to be a reduced need for parking spaces, but an increased need for delivery and curbside pickup locations. This ongoing housing crisis became more obvious as the pandemic unfolded. It further highlighted the unequitable attainability of desired housing for many. Vacancy rates in office buildings, rentals, especially student rentals, increased, yet rentals and for sale units remain out of reach. We urge Patent Township to be proactive and embracing while we recover from the pandemic and grow into a new norm. The township is in a unique position to meet community needs by planning for housing diversity in all neighborhoods and affordability at all income levels, making Patent Township a place for all. For our vision, we're calling it a place for all. Patent Township residents have shown that good things happen when communities unite and act on shared values. When residents voted to borrow millions of dollars to preserve open space, they acted on the value that they placed in preserving green space and not wanting it to go missing as the township developed. Today, there is a new missing element, the people who work here but cannot afford or struggle to live here. Patent Township residents value our amazing school teachers, healthcare workers, grocery clerks. We appreciate the bus drivers, janitors, restaurant workers, municipal place, and of course, help release. We envision Patent Township as a place for all. We embrace the missing residents who add so much to the economic and social vibrancy of our community. So just a quick snapshot of the real estate market today, because a place for all starts with real estate. The number of overall home listings in the State College Area School District declined about 10% over the last two years, though the total number of sales within those listings increased. So while there have been more sales so far in 2021 than in 2022 and 2019, price point for homes under $250,000 is lacking. The average residential sale price in the State College Area School District was $384,673. And that was a nine-and-a-half percent increase over the last two years. So to hear more about housing, I'm going to pass it over to Kristen.
Kristen, are you there?
I suppose I should unmute, huh? I'll get used to this in like two years. All right. Housing is a basic human right that cannot be addressed by a one-size-fits-all solution. In the January 2013 issue of Town and Gown Magazine, Natalie Corman, who is currently the Human Service Administrator for the county, said, "Affordable housing is just what people can afford to live in. What I live in is affordable to me. What other people live in is affordable to them." This is a good way to define attainable housing, but we need to ask ourselves, is housing in our community affordable for people at various income levels? According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, paying for a mortgage or rent should only require 30% of one's gross monthly income. This percentage has been determined so that a household has enough money to properly budget for other necessities such as food, transportation, and healthcare. The average sale price of homes has increased 16.93% in the last 10 years, a rate much higher than salary increases, particularly for our essential workers. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, it would take working 94 hours a week at minimum wage to afford a one-bedroom home at the fair market rent in State College of $8.85 a month. There are many challenges that developers face when building attainable housing: site development, site acquisition, the income needed to afford strict building requirements that are mandated by the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, PHFA, as well as time and money spent to gain community support for these projects. Unfortunately, many of these projects are met with adversity from neighbors and the community. In addition to that, land is expensive in the Center Region, hookup fees for utilities are higher, and developers can typically turn a higher profit building student rentals. There is often a misunderstanding about what low-income housing is. There are terms like income-based or income-restricted, but confusion on what those actually mean. For the purpose of our report, we use the term income-guided to cover the concept in a more blanketed way. The low-income housing tax credit program, called LITC, does not provide housing subsidies. Instead, this program provides tax incentives written into the Internal Revenue Code that encourages developers to create affordable housing. Residents must meet the unit income limits. Rents are not based on the resident's income, and the rents are set by the state's allocating agency and then monitored. Many of the folks living in these communities are people that are working in our community, but their incomes fall between 20% and 60% of the area median income. Looking at census data and the number of income-based housing units in the Center Region, there is a far greater need for attainable housing than we have current supply. Think of those referred to as the missing middle, people that are above the 60% of AMI, typically closer to 80% to 120%, that do not qualify for housing assistance. As a housing professional that works in affordable housing in our community, I will share with you that PMI manages six affordable housing communities which total 218 units. Every one of the properties that we manage has a waitlist with the average person for each size, about 32 people on that waitlist. So the size of those waitlists, in my opinion, tells us a story, which is that we simply do not have enough attainable housing in Center County. Next, we're going to hear about zoning.
Thank you. I'll cover the zoning recommendations from our task force, and I'll start with what is zoning. Zoning is a collection of laws that municipalities adopt to regulate development. The zoning ordinance defines the type of uses that can be developed in specific areas. It also indicates aspects such as the dimensional requirements for the lots, the density of building, and the size of buildings. The Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code requires municipalities that have a comprehensive plan to include planning for housing to meet the needs of current and future residents at all income levels. The Municipal Planning Code also states that zoning must provide for a variety of housing types. In addition, the Center Region Comprehensive Plan, adopted in 2013 by Patent Township and the five other Center Region municipalities, includes the recommendation for a comprehensive housing plan. This is the framework within which we will consider recommendations to address housing for all residents in Patent Township. A look at past and present aerial images shows us some of the redevelopment that has occurred, converting previous multifamily residential areas to commercial. The two largest were on the sites that are now the Trader Joe's Plaza on the north side of North Atherton Street and Patent Crossing, which is currently under development on the south side with the Aldi nearing completion. These two redevelopment projects resulted in zoning ordinance additions as Patent Township responded to the loss of attainable housing units that were displaced by the commercial development. The rezoning request for the Trader Joe's Plaza project resulted in the creation of the Commercial Transitional District. This zoning district includes in its purpose to potentially supply new housing within close proximity of employment, retail, and public transportation, and to offer a mechanism to address Patent Township's need for housing that is affordable to households with incomes no greater than 120% of the Center County annual median income through the aid of private sector commercial development. A community land trust was created, and the new housing developed through that must be kept permanently affordable. The Patent Crossing Project instigated the creation of the Mixed Use Overlay District 2. Among other goals, this overlay is intended to permit and encourage a diverse mix of land uses on properties located near existing commercial and residential areas, and to provide workforce and/or affordable housing opportunities consistent with the goals and objectives of the Center Region Comprehensive Plan. This zoning district also offers developers incentives to build additional affordable units. These attainable housing additions to the Patent Township zoning ordinance were developed on a project-by-project basis, and while they provided a step in addressing the housing needs, they do not represent a comprehensive change. Using the work that went into these zoning provisions as a stepping stone, as well as the guidance provided by zoning provisions already in place in surrounding municipalities, Patent Township has the opportunity to create broader opportunities for attainable housing through adjustments to the Patent Township zoning ordinance. As noted in an article from the American Planning Association, a trio of reforms has emerged in zoning adjustments occurring across the United States. The following three recommendations are consistent with those reforms. The first zoning adjustment recommendation is related to accessory dwelling units. Per the American Planning Association, an accessory dwelling unit is a smaller, independent residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as a standalone, single-family home. ADUs go by many different names throughout the U.S., including accessory apartments, secondary suites, and granny flats. ADUs can be converted from portions of existing homes, additions to homes, or standalone accessory structures. ADUs enhance attainable housing opportunities for both the homeowner and the tenant. Some of the surrounding municipalities, such as College Township and Ferguson Township, address accessory dwelling units in their zoning ordinances and provide a reference for Patent Township. The second zoning adjustment is related to parking requirements. Parking requirements can impact lot size, impervious coverage ratios, and the development cost. Higher development costs are passed on to the buyers or renters. Requiring less parking can yield more overall units at a more affordable price. Parking requirements could be revised in areas of our community with access to public transportation or other alternatives to personal vehicle use. Many metropolitan and some suburban areas have reduced or even eliminated minimum parking requirements. Examples of parking requirement revisions that could be used as guidance can be found throughout the U.S. The third zoning adjustment is related to inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning defines methods to encourage or require developers to incorporate a certain percentage of affordable units in their projects. The Center County Planning and Community Development Office conducted a study of inclusionary housing. In their 2010 report, "Inclusionary Housing Model Policies for Center County," it provides a step-by-step process for municipalities to reference in the development of their own policies. These model policies, as well as policies in place in local municipalities, can serve as a guide for developing zoning provisions in Patent Township that will promote an increase in attainable housing options. State College Borough has an inclusionary housing ordinance. College Township and Ferguson Township both have workforce housing ordinances. We urge Patent Township to consider broadly allowing accessory dwelling units, to look at reducing parking requirements, and to adopt an inclusionary zoning ordinance. Here's how you can get involved with this discussion: attend public meetings, follow Patent Township on social media and website announcements, or contact staff. Now, we'll turn it over to Anita to discuss the recommendations from our task force.
Okay, thank you. Doug, I don't know if you want to put the agenda listing up. Our task force brings four recommendations for action, recognizing this is a multifaceted, very complex challenge that the township faces. These recommendations are detailed on pages 46 to 53 of our report, which was included as an attachment to this agenda and is also available on our website, and that includes many more details. I'll go through them very briefly. Recommendation number one: on designating attainable housing as a Patent Township work priority and community focus, and especially the community focus for 2022. This, we believe, is very important to signify the township's commitment to community discussions, which are going to be essential as the township looks at plans to step into the future. And this acknowledgement of attainable housing as a priority would involve saying to the planning commission, "This is a top work priority for you in 2022." This isn't the first time the board has designated work priorities for the planning commission, and we think that with all that has happened recently with the pandemic and with our research and report and the challenge of housing, that it's appropriate for the board to once again designate this as a work priority for the planning commission. It also would include encouraging our township communications specialists to continue to put articles about attainable housing and services that are available for folks who are seeking housing information on our website. Another aspect of that would be approving the continuation of a core group of the Patent Township Housing Task Force. To continue next year, we envision it only meeting four times during the year, but continuing with strategies for public engagement and reporting on current research that is coming up. So that is our recommendation, number one, to designate attainable housing as a priority. Number two, to encourage the county and region-wide housing efforts. These include some plans to possibly have a county housing survey, and our supervisors already have been very active on the county committees that look at housing and infrastructure. And so this isn't something new for our township, but with this priority, we acknowledge, we would like the township to acknowledge the importance of the regional collaboration. And should countywide studies be proposed that might come back before the township, to obviously consider them seriously, especially if they involve any financial support for continuing those studies. Data that could be reached from those studies would be very important for decision-making of all the townships. And in addition, this number-two recommendation is to encourage even deeper collaboration with our housing organizations and regional housing service providers. They, in the past, have come before the board with information presentations, and this acknowledgement would continue in the coming year, especially if you approve the continuation of the Patent Township Housing Task Force core group, they could be a liaison with these housing providers. Number three is dealing with funding, and this is something that will be more deeply discussed in item 7A of the agenda when the board looks at the funding through the American Rescue Plan money. So that discussion will be held till later in this agenda, but I would say that that one, that particular recommendation, that's for immediate impact on our current Patent Township residents. Some of the other recommendations involve more of the long-term planning and discussion. And speaking of which, then, recommendation four, we would ask the board to refer to the planning commission all of the planning and zoning recommendations that our task force has provided. We realize that these will involve much research and deliberation and reflection on the planning commission part and much citizen engagement. And our task force, should you choose to refer it to the planning commission, we are prepared to introduce these items at the planning commission December 6 meeting. So those are the four action items that we bring tonight before the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anita and Nicole, and all the members of the task force for all your hard work. I know you've spent hours and hours and hours on developing the research and the proposals that you have given to us. So let me see if there are any questions from board members to the task force. Okay, don't see any hands raised from the three other members. How about the public? Any questions or comments from the public? Anybody present who would like to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Ellen Foreman, and I live in Toftrees on Varsity Lane, and I think the report is outstanding. You all did a phenomenal job on it, very thorough. The one question I had really, and it's probably more of a question because I heard you talk a little bit about it, is that you talk about the missing middle. It's referred to as often in the report, and I did go to the website and looked at that as well, but at least several of you have talked about walkable communities and bikable communities, but I didn't really see specific recommendations on that in the final set of recommendations, and I wondered if there was a reason for that or if you feel like it's addressed in other ways, and that's my question.
Anita, do you want to take that question?
I would wonder if Nicole could speak about the missing middle. But in terms of walkability and neighborhoods, yes, there's, among the research we found was something from some areas that are doing what are called 20-minute neighborhoods, where folks are able, through walking or public transportation or biking, to access essential services, groceries, stores, within a 20-minute walk or bike ride or bus trip of where they live. That's a trend to keep on the horizon. There obviously would be challenges in our township for going really far in that, but there are some areas where that is starting to possibly happen, the Patent Crossing development, for instance. But Nicole, would you address the missing middle aspect?
Would it be possible for you to repeat that part of the question? I didn't really hear a question specifically pertaining to the missing middle, or if you're just looking for more information?
Yeah, the question was specifically in the recommendations, the specific recommendations that you make. I didn't see anything specifically about building out any infrastructure for walkability and bikeability, which actually, if you look at some of the data that you, deeper into the data that you provided, transportation is a significant percentage of household income, and if you're looking for an affordable solution, walkability and bikeability and public transit are all important aspects of affordable housing. So that's why I was asking why that wasn't a specific recommendation, or if it is buried in the other recommendation somewhere.
No, it's not a specific recommendation, but it certainly could be if this moves to go to the planning commission for planning and zoning-related items. That is certainly another element we can fold into that. And I do believe that that, in addition to what Supervisor Ties has already mentioned, the parking requirement conversation would be very heavily focused on those other modes of transportation. When you start to look at adjusting parking requirements, you really need to make sure that you are providing every other mode of transportation you possibly can. So I guess that would be where we would really kind of start to look at those types of infrastructure. And we did have some educational presentation on transportation. We had people come talk to us about CADA routes and our bike and pedestrian planning. So yes, that will very much be part of the conversation.
Okay, I see a hand raised. James Herbert Graef, go ahead. Where do you live?
I'm James Graef. I live on Bearman Avenue in the borough, and I'm so happy to see these final recommendations. I'm glad Patent Township is considering such an important issue. I think allowing ADUs and duplexes will open our more desirable neighborhoods to more people that could live in them previously. I think creating space for dense mixed-use, walkable, transitory, and development, like at Patent Crossing in what are now strip malls today, would allow for living options that haven't been seen before in Patent Township. And I think examining parking requirements will allow all of this to happen. I mean, if ADUs, ADUs will be options for many more families if the size of their driveway isn't a concern, and apartments will be cheaper to build with less parking, meaning cheaper rents, and families won't have to have the cost burden of car ownership, especially when I call the CADA bus service, and hopefully future protected bike lanes, as the last speaker was addressing. So thanks again to the task force and to the staff and to the board for your hard work.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments? Anybody?
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rob, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to Anita Ties, my colleague, but most of all, to the task force. And Nicole, your videos are outstanding, and to each and every member of this task force. You have done a remarkable job in putting this information out. We have gotten comments from our community, and it's an outstanding effort and dedication to all of you who continue to come to the meetings, do your reports. So we truly say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
No, we did have some comments that were provided by Kathleen Dominick today.
Yes. Kathleen Dominick, we have your comments. All the board members have received them, and we've read them. Thank you. Elliot Abrams, Supervisor Abrams, go ahead.
I think the committee has done an excellent job, and obviously, we should continue its work in future years and expand upon it. Some of the big challenges, though, we talk about, for example, bike-rideable communities, and for three months out of the year, we do not offer any maintenance on the bike paths as far as snow and ice removal. That's also a And for three months out of the year, we do not offer any maintenance on the bike paths as far as snow and ice removal. That's also a walking difficulty. And as far as mass transit is concerned, we've gone in the wrong direction so far this year. Not only have we not expanded our use of mass transit, but it's decreased. And it's often decreased with little notice to people. People, at the football game this past weekend, wanted to go there and take the bus from downtown. Oh, suddenly it was canceled the day before. We have to do an organized job with this and make sure that we have these things available to people if we are going to have these kind of communities. You can't just live in a community, whether it's attainable, affordable, or whatever, if you can't get somewhere reliably.
Thank you, Elliot. Supervisor Betsy Whitman, go ahead.
Well, actually, in a word, wow. I'm really impressed, and I know the amount of work that went into it because I would openly admit that I did not have the time to commit to it. I was doing other things. But I was with the task force for long enough to realize the depth of work that involved. So it's really remarkable. And I want to especially give a shout out to Supervisor Ties, who had the vision and person capacity for these work to offer, and to stick with it, and to Nicole Pollack as the staff member involved in this. A lot of the work go on her, and I know that that involves some, some flexibility on her part and her other responsibilities. And especially thanking Nicole for your accessibility. The times early on when I called up and asked for things, you're right there and provided several references and explanations. So that's really, really remarkable. I wanted, only to comment now concerning the task force in specific is just a site, insight that we all solve problems in compartments. And I do think that housing and transportation are intricably intertwined, as a number of people have mentioned. And the question about the parks, speaking about the trails asked early on, the center region does actually have a, really, I think, a very commendable group of people who work on that, headed up by Trish Meeks. But it does sound to me like, you know, a sitting down and talking specifically about where to locate the successful housing, and then obviously, the transportation, be it either public transit or trails, is paramount. But I recognize that the Housing Task Force is looking, looking at housing, that we need to uncompartmentalize if we move forward. Really excellent work, really excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other person wishes to make a comment or ask a question? I don't see any hands raised. So the next step here would be to review the, the four recommendations that the task force has presented to us. The first one is to designate attainable housing as a patent township work priority and community focus for 2022, next year. Should we take these as individual motions, Doug, or can?
Your choice, sir.
Discussion about that first proposal. Elliot, go ahead.
I'll make the motion so we can discuss it. We should make that a priority.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. So let's continue. Any comments, questions? Board members, public?
I'd just like to mention the obvious connection between addressing our housing needs and addressing our needs for climate action.
Any other board or public comments? Pam?
Let's move forward. I think it's self-explanatory. We need it, and since to keep this ball rolling for 2021 into 2022, we need to move on it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, discussion on this? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 It was unanimous, so the motion carries. Second recommendation was to encourage county and region-wide housing efforts and deepen collaboration with housing organizations and regional housing service providers.
Move the motion?
Elliot moves to approve this recommendation. Is there a second? Seconded by Pam Robb. Discussion? Yes, Elliot, go ahead.
This is so important because so many people have information, but only by joining the information together and meshing it and using it, and for specific needs, and to address various things we have to take care of. If one person knows all this stuff, and somebody else knows all that stuff, and they're operating in silos, all you get is silage out of it instead of actual action.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I agree with Elliot. I agree with Elliot. I'm also on the COG, Public Service, Environmental, Transportation, and Land Use. And one of the issues that comes up is talking with county. So this is so important that we, we communicate and collaborate with each other. So I'm all for this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor, the second motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Vote is unanimous, so the motion carries. Recommendation three, we will pick up later in this meeting when we reach item number seven, and we talk about ARP funds. Recommendation four, to direct a planning commission to bring to the board recommendations of planning and zoning approaches that support attainable housing, and that the board refer the following task force recommendations to the planning commission for their consideration in the task. And there's a list of six or seven specific items. Elliot?
I'll move the motion, and recognizing that our planning commission is vital of this, very important agency, they can do a lot of the, the good work to get this underway and, and to help it move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pam Robb, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion carries, unanimous. Thank you very much. We will now move on. Again, thank you very, all your hard work, task force, thank you, exceptional work.
Thank you all.
Next item is 3B, responses, response from CADA on the service reduction. Doug, you want to introduce this?
Yeah, just as you recall, at the October 13 meeting, Mark Parfatt, who is our representative to the CADA Board of Directors, had approached the board asking for help in reaching back out to the CADA Board of Directors about service reductions, especially the A route in Patent Township. The board sent the letter dated October 15. Our Dan sent it on behalf of the board supervisors with Mark Parfatt's letter attached. We received last Friday a response from the board chair, somewhat responding to some of the comments, but not all the comments. So we provided that. I have to apologize, I forgot to notify Mr. Parfatt that we were having this discussion tonight, but if the board would like to review the response and discuss the matter, and we can figure out where we might want to go from there.
Board members, discussion on the, on this item. I assume you all have read the, the response, the CADA response from John Bychalsik? Bychalski? Bychalski?
Bychalski.
Elliot, yes?
I believe it's bychalski, but the thing, I mean, one of the things in, in that letter indicated that the comments came not, not from the whole board. And I don't know anyone on the board that isn't concerned about this transportation issue. And do we need to pay the drivers more? Do we need to start having part-time drivers that may be students? Where does the union get involved? What about the Go CADA agency? There are, there are ways to solve this problem. I think whoever is working on this needs to be working on this every day. And that's the most important thing, to restore the service, and because people aren't going to use something that they can't count on.
Thank you, Elliot. Other comments?
Comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Pam.
My concern is, in the letter, it says, "Once I can schedule time for the board to discuss this." I think this should be immediate. I know everyone has their, their busy schedule, but this also is important. So I'm hoping that CADA's board could call for a special meeting, just like we do for most organizations, when something important comes up, they call a special meeting. And this is one of those times where it's, it's, it's important that the board is pulled together and discuss our, this issue of elimination of the A route. So I would hope that they would expedite their board meeting or call for a special meeting to address this.
Other comments, discussion? Any members of the public wish to address this issue? Yeah, I echo, and I agree with what Elliot and Pam have said, and I note that, that the letter did not address one of Mr. Parfatt's concerns and, which the board shared, and that is that service reductions were made to participating municipality, meaning, you know, we are contributing over $100,000 to CADA, but the, their service was not reduced to a non-participating municipality who does not contribute their own municipal funds to, to CADA. So that's also a concern to me. Anita Ties, go ahead.
Yes, I support what Supervisor Rob and all of you are saying. Do we need a motion to have a letter, a request made of CADA to have an emergency meeting?
Unless you've already composed the letter that you want us to vote on, I think the manager has consensus here. Perhaps you can draft a response from the board, which I'll be happy to sign with, with the issues that we responded with in turn.
Yeah, I can work on that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? All right, if not, then let's move on. Next item is for public safety, propose use of deadly force policy. Do you want to start this, Doug?
Yeah. We've been working on this issue, we've been working on several police issues, I think, for a year now. And we started with this proposed use of deadly force, I believe, last spring. So we've gone through an extensive process of reaching out to the community, working closely with Dr. Jones and the chief and our solicitor, Betsy Dupuy. We were at the board last on August 18. We provided a draft that, that we had jointly crafted together. From there, we've met twice with the Patent Township Police Department's Police Officers Association. That's the bargaining unit for our collective bargaining agreement with the police officers. We had two, two meetings, as I noted. You'll see you had in the agenda, item 4A dot one, which is a redline copy showing the changes that we incorporated between what the board saw on August 18, and what was then found to be acceptable by not only the POA, but Dr. Jones, Chief Jolly, myself, and the manager. So that's the result of all those meetings is what we bring to you tonight. And then also attached with the agenda was item 4A two, which is a resolution 2021 dash zero zero five, which is, would be, if the board considers and picks action, the formal policy document that the board would adopt. And then Chief Jolly would incorporate this policy into the manual for the Patent Township Police Department. If you have questions, I'll go over it. I don't think there's a real need to go over line, item by item, but if you have questions about certain aspects, be more than glad to answer those, or get Chief Jolly or Betsy Dupuy, and I did see Dr. Jones is with us too. With that, I'll turn back to the board.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any, yes, Betsy Whitman, go ahead.
I would just like to commend the process here, especially in light of the processes that are not happening in many communities across the nation. So being able to come to the table and have a discussion, quite remarkable. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. What's your question?
No, no question. I'm just commending the, to the communication and the compatibility of the group that came together and worked to, you know, come up with a workable solution, and especially in contrast to what is or isn't going on in other communities across the nation. It's a very difficult issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just commending the process, sorry.
Thank you for clarifying. I misunderstood you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Anybody? Yeah, okay, we've certainly reviewed this multiple times in our board meetings, so the next step would then be to, a motion to approve resolution 2021 dash zero zero five.
It's 20, actually, that's a mistake. Should we, 2021 dash zero twenty, or dash 21, I apologize.
So moved?
Moved by Whit, Betsy Whitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Rob. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Everyone voted yes, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. Next is 5A, Public Works Gypsy Moth Update. Doug?
Yeah, I apologize again. Mr. Wilson, Joe Wilson, who authored this study, was not available tonight. We got our wires crossed on the date. I can go ahead and present if you'd like, or we can reschedule this. The short version of it is that we looked extensively throughout the township to see if we have egg masses, which are, would be a sign of a gypsy moth infestation for next spring. For the most part, we found hardly any. The one area we did find some is at the Grayswoods Preserve out in Grayswoods. Mr. Wilson did find enough there to recommend, make a recommendation that we should spray out there. I think that's a reasonable and good recommendation. I would also, before we make a final plan for next spring for spraying, I would also suggest we do a little more checking out in that area, maybe at Park Forest Elementary School, and maybe some of the homeowner association, open space lots, just to make sure we've got all the areas that we think we're going to got all the areas that we think we're going to have infestations and make sure we get them sprayed. But at this point, we would be doing some spraying in that 100-acre area of the Grayswoods Preserve. Like I said, if you'd like more information, I can have Mr. Wilson at a future meeting. If you haven't met him, I encourage you to, if you ever get a chance to talk to him, he's very, very, very knowledgeable about the things he does, and we use him quite frequently with our open space issues.
Oh, yeah, I was certainly very impressed with the intensity and completeness of this long report. There are no page, no, wait, 21, 25, 26-page report with all these charts. So you don't need approval from the board to take the initiative?
No, I mean, if you just tell me to do what we need to do for next year, that's fine.
Well, I agree with, personally, I just agree with what you said you were planning to do.
Yeah.
Schedule spraying for that plot was all, but also to do more thorough examination of the areas that immediately surround that.
Yep.
I certainly live in that area of neighborhood, and I've had some of my neighbors report to me, they've discovered.
Yeah, we noticed, we had a lot of reports in June, and then by the end of June, beginning of July, almost all the caterpillars had died. There's a couple of natural toxins that.
Right. So it's possible that they never got to reach the stage of laying eggs because they didn't.
Yeah, they don't lay eggs until September. So when they die on the tree, that's a good thing for us, not much for them. But they don't, yeah, the moths come out in August, September, they have a very short life cycle of the moth, but the one thing they do is lay eggs. And they will eat thousands of eggs, which makes it part of the reason why you have to be a little bit proactive to make sure you don't have an issue the next spring.
Correct. Okay, Elliot, go ahead.
Just wanted to clarify on that, that it's so important to keep on top of it. Our memory of the gypsy moth situation has gotten kind of moth eaten, but we all got butterflies when it happened the last time. And we'd almost reached the point where we had to go out and salt and cinder the roads because they got so slippery from all the droppings from. So it's really an obnoxious thing.
Yeah, we all remember that. We all remember that year, and I certainly don't want to see it repeated if we can help it. Betsy, go ahead. You're muted, Betsy. Okay.
Whatever. Sorry. Is there any coordination with Hattaway Township on gypsy moth spraying of the BT, whatever the subject is?
No, we haven't to date, but we can reach out to them. We'll also reach out to Game Commission, see if they have any plans. They're also.
I'm just curious, more than anything. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's move on. Next agenda item is 5B, Small Cell Wireless Facilities. Doug?
We've looked at parts of this many times and the full thing at least once. I won't go through the whole spiel for you at this point, but due to a change to Pennsylvania law, we are adopting or propose to adopt these small cell wireless facility regulations to regulate how these small cell or 5G antennas will be deployed in public right-of-ways in the township. We, Act 50, give us certain rights and responsibilities that we have to undertake as part of this program. So ordinance 2021 dash 622 is those proposed regulations. And you also note that in the consent agenda, there's two companion pieces that are also included, ones of resolution to adopt design guidelines, which are permitted by Act 50 and gives us another chance to provide guidance to the carriers to make sure they give us aesthetically, maybe not necessarily aesthetically pleasing, but facilities that will fit into what the types of equipment we already already have in our right-of-way. So with that, I'd recommend that the board take action to approve ordinance 2021 dash 622, Small Cell Wireless Facilities.
I'll accept a motion to adopt ordinance number 2021 dash 622.
So moved.
Moved, seconded by Anita Teas. Discussion. Seeing no hands raised, let's move to a vote. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All five voted aye, so that's approved by unanimous consent. Unanimous vote. Next item is 7A, Administration, American Rescue Plan. Doug?
Yeah, we've been, we're the recipients of approximately 1.654, 645 million dollars from U.S. Treasury as part of the American Rescue Plan. To date, as you noted on page eight of the agenda, the various board members have suggested various projects that they believe should be funded with this. Couple of updates from the agenda that was published last week was for the First Time Home Buyers Fund under Mr. Teas' suggestions. We've added $5,000 to that to cover administrative costs, to have Center County Housing Land Trust administer that process for us. Also then, with the supplement that went out yesterday, Supervisor Rob has also put in the proposal that we provide a $10,000 grant to the Home Foundation, which is a branch of housing transitions that provides education and counseling for residents on home buying, credit counseling, and other ways to save money and achieve financial stability. With that, oh, there was also a question at the last meeting about our various bikeway projects. So I did pull that information together, and it was included in the agenda as item 7A 3. Proofread myself there. So without going through that, there's several bike projects that are already in the CIP. Those are found in Parks 4, Parks 6, Parks 7, those are just project numbers, designations, Parks 8, and then Admin 11. Those projects are all already in the bike, in the capital improvement plan for funding and construction in the next five years. That's a total cost of all those projects is just shy of $2 million at 1.92, with about 75% of that anticipated from grants. There are also, I think, specific question was asked about the Belton Central Rail Trail, BCRT. I did, I've had put together estimates for those that we will be using in the future to secure grants. You see, BCRT Phase C, there, or, can you go to the last couple of pages of that document, Alex? There's some mapping there. Maybe go one more page down. Yep, there you go. So the Phase C of the BCRT is that portion of the property, the trail that runs between the apartments and I-99. And it's, parts of it are developed, and we have easements. Parts are undeveloped, and we have easements, and parts are semi-developed, and we don't have easement. So we're working on securing easements where we don't have them, and then we'll have to figure out the funding to develop those completely once we have the right-of-ways in place. Phases A and B of the Belton Central Rail Trail then, and you can go back one page, Alex. There you go. That's the part that runs through the wooded part of the future development part of cough trees. There's supposed to be where it's split between A and B, that's supposed to be where there's a future road crossing there. So if we need to pick it up, we can break this into at least two phases. Now, there's one little piece of right-of-way we need on the far western end of that. We have half the right-of-way there, and we need to get the other half of the right-of-way from a different property owner. So that's just the summary. If you, all those projects altogether are $4.7 million. So that, what we are anticipating, what we think that we get is maybe 2/3 of that covered by grants, 3.16 million, and that would leave a balance of 1.6 from township funding. No timeframe on those BCRT ones at this point, other than I currently am working on some of those right-of-way issues. We need to have the right-of-way in place before we can go get grant funds.
Right.
That's the end of my report.
Doug, can I make a correction on our agenda where it says the Home Foundation Education Program? See item 5A dash 1, it should say 7A.
Yeah, yeah.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
I thank you.
Betsy, do you have, your hand raised? Go ahead.
Yes, and I just wanted to note that I had asked at a previous meeting that we get an estimate of putting solar on the roof carpet. And I apologize, I didn't follow up on that. But part of that research, I guess, is going to also have to include the need for a new roof on the township, because it's, they do recommend a new roof be put on before solar be installed. So I wouldn't want to encourage use of solar if the roof of the township was relatively new. So I just, I just wanted to note that I'd like to include the solar, putting solar on the township roof as an option, but we don't have a price, I apologize.
Yeah, Doug wrote it in just now.
I don't recall the dollar amount, but it's either $30,000 or $50,000. Double check on that.
Elliot, go ahead.
I didn't give a specific recommendation, although if I were to, it would be to improve pedestrian access on Atherton Street for that whole corridor, though, so that people can walk across the street without worrying about getting run over. Same thing for bicycles. And also that we did a survey that you ran, I think, Doug, to see what people wanted to add as projects. But when we were doing open space, we actually had a committee that went out and actively looked for these ideas, then studied them. And maybe this, since considering the amount of money involved, is something we should do now. People may have ideas that they don't even know where they can send them to, and so maybe we should try again at that.
So we have the, in a previous board meeting in September, the 22nd, we got, the manager gave us, you know, the survey results, you know, percentages and all that. What are you asking now, Elliot? Are you asking us to have a committee to solicit more input from citizens?
I don't know. Well, I mean, we didn't get much of a response from that. And.
Well, there were 206 responses.
Well.
Oh, no, never mind. What was it? How many responses did we get? 206? Yeah, 206. But there weren't, the survey did not provide for indication of a specific projects. I think that's what we're looking for now, specific projects and estimated costs.
And that's what I think we should seek out. People may think of things that we can't, I suspect, that more people outside of our own boards and things can probably think of things in their own neighborhoods that might need to be addressed. Now's the time to invite that, I think. That's all. Nobody's done anything wrong.
I'm thinking of process, and, you know, how do you structure that without really duplicating what we've already done? Somebody have any ideas on that? Yeah, Elliot, go ahead.
Well, we've had a great increase in work on the township's website, and it might be possible to get people more active looking at it and also using it for this purpose in the future. Now, maybe I'm dreaming, but that's why we invested, to improve the website.
Okay, well, Larry Peger is on, so he has heard your comments. And Doug, we can work with Sophie, they can work with Sophie about some ideas. Go ahead and implement them. I don't think they need Board or Supervisors, just directive. But what we're seeking are suggestions for some specific projects, and not just responses here.
Yeah, ultimately, the money has to be spent on specific projects.
Correct.
If they aren't eligible under the frame of the American Rescue Plan, we can all really pay for them. We can use monies that are designated as revenue replacement.
Right.
For assumed losses that we incurred in last year because of COVID. But the money has to be, still has to be spent on specific projects.
Right.
And that has to be reported back to the federal government. We just can't take those monies and specifically prohibited from putting it in a rainy day fund or cash balance or anything like that.
I understand.
At the end of the day, at some point, we need to have a list of projects that adds up to at least 1.6 some million dollars, so we can report that back to.
Let me ask you to clarify that 1.6 billion. I thought we only had to have specific projects after we take, designate the revenue recovery portion, which is 1.2 million. After that's designated for revenue recovery and put in the general funds, we really only need to worry about the additional $400,000.
No, we, we need to spend that 1.2 million also on something. So, I mean, we could spend it on projects that we already have in our CIP.
Yeah.
The, the projects.
Question is, is that what the board, question is, what's the board's desire with?
I see, but the 1.2 million revenue recovery money doesn't have any restrictions on it?
No, but it has to be used, it has to be spent.
I mean, it could be spent for personnel.
No, it has to be spent on some sort of project or something.
What's the timeline again on that?
Yeah, I mean, we can get a clarification, but I don't think we could, we can't just use it to pay salaries. We have to report that it went to some sort of project.
Then I misunderstood all the information that's been passed down from PSATs and PML and to say, you know, your revenue recovery money, you put it in your general fund, and you can use it for anything. That's always what I've heard. So if you, please get clarification on that.
Well, what you could do is take that 1.2 million, spend it on things that we already have in our CIP, which would free up another 1.2 million for salaries or something. But the federal government wants us to report that we spent it on something that was helping stimulate the economy or something along those lines. Is that your understanding, Larry, or am I out in left field on this?
Larry's been trying to get in.
No, you're not out in left field. The 1.2 million is, that we have in revenue replacement is, we're more open to spending, what we can spend that money on. The other, which is, which is, and you're right, we can't keep it in the bank. We can't use it for our designated rainy day funds. We can't use it to pay down our debt. There are certain things we can't do with. There are certain things we can't do with the, with the 1.2 million. The other 400,000 dollars of our, of our money has to be spent specifically on COVID-related items. So there's four items that are listed specifically in the American Rescue Plan that it has to be spent on, on those four items. And what exactly are those four items? The Department of the Treasury has not given us any, any idea what those are. So we're still waiting for the Treasury Department to give us final regulations, which may include how we can spend the, the revenue replacement funds. So what they are saying is, right now, we can spend, pretty much spend the revenue replacement funds on whatever we want. And if we do that, we're covered, but they could come back in the future and say, oh, you could spend those revenue replacement funds on these things, other than you can't spend it on bypass, for lack of a better term. We don't know what that's going to be, because Treasury Department hasn't given us any guidance.
So are you advising us to withhold spending any money until we receive those Treasury regulations?
I would, I would be slow in spending the money until the regulations come out, though the regulations are supposed to come out, last I heard, sometime in October. So hopefully, we'll have them early next week or some...
There were some final, what'd they call them, interim final or something like that?
Interim final.
I mean, one thing we can do, and we probably will need to do, is engage a consultant to help us answer these questions. I had always thought we'd probably hold back at least 5% to help us with that, to make sure when we do something, we spend it the right way, and then when we have to report those things, we report them the right way. So maybe, but at some point, at the end of the day, we, we should have a list of projects or programs or things like that, that end up adding up to 1.6 million dollars, that we can, and all that has to be spent by the end of 2026. So if you want to do something that's, you know, maybe something that's on Anita's list or one of those things, we can engage a consultant, and that'd be some of the first questions we can ask them, if you want to go down that route.
I'd like to do that.
Right, I just, you know, in everything at the PML summit, in the, in the, in the class that I went to regarding this, plus I did have breakfast with the person from Mayor Dossel that gave the, the class, and their recommendation is really be slow at spending this money until we get the, the, the regulations from the Treasury.
Yeah, no, I...
Just be really slow.
That's true. Everything I've heard from them says the same thing, and don't rush into this until we receive those final Treasury regulations.
Don't rush, we have plenty of time to spend it. I think it has to be committed by the end of 2025 and spent by the end of 2026. Is that what your understanding is, Doug?
Yeah, in terms of timing, yeah, it has to be obligated by the end of '24 and spent by the end of '26, calendar years. I, I think the question, one, I think Dan's first question was, how specific do we need to be with our expenditures for the revenue replacement funds? And are they, is there prohibitions about just using them for payroll, or do they have to go to specific projects? So we can answer that. I see our solicitor's turned on her video. Did you have something to add, Betsy?
I just shared with Larry a couple of bullet points that Zell and Cosby Oxalrot has put together, and they're the firm that's working with PSATs and providing them some information. And of course, they're also the consultant the county has retained. The county has already spent some of their money. AZ has put together a list that Larry has of how it fits into there. I do think that, from the perspective they've taken, the revenue replacement is, gives you some flexibility, but to your point, Doug, you can't just sort of create new projects. The intent here is this is really revenue replacement and how you use it, so, and it's obviously Larry's done the calculation, so you know what the numbers are. It's based upon this period, and it's related to COVID. But I, I would strongly encourage you to come up with a list of items, and then for many of them, reach out to a consultant that you engaged to review that. I, you know, I don't want to put a damper on this, but, you know, that, I've already heard several of these folks say pretty flat out, you can't just go out and buy a new firetruck. You can't just go out and buy a new police car. Those are not the kinds of things that are intended to be used with this money. How that fits into this revenue replacement issue is a good question and could be asked of, of one of those consultants, but they've been, I think you're probably all aware that the county has taken a piece of their money to put, to invest in broadband, which is specifically something that's out there, broadband and infrastructure improvements like water and sewer, but...
Water and sewer, yeah.
No, I know, for example, Pam put down there the sidewalk. I don't know, you know, the first item, which is this broad category of COVID-19 health emergency response and coming up with ways to help households, small businesses, nonprofits, is not, it's not a defined term. So to Larry's point, the regulations are not, even the interim regulations are not clear on telling you, giving you examples, right? It would be nice if they could give you a laundry list. Here's what you can do, and here's what you can't do, so. I strongly encourage you to, as you develop that list, to then let Larry and Doug go out and, and work with a consultant, whoever you pick, who is, these guys, these guys, gals, the companies that are doing this are specializing in it. I mean, they literally are putting a lot of man-hours on following these regulations, looking at decisions, asking questions. They've got a lot more time involved because they're representing multiple clients across the Commonwealth.
Well, I'm with, I'm with your, I'm with Doug, with getting a consultant to kind of cover us in making sure we're following the government's guidelines, which they, they have a catch-22 on each side. You know, we'll give you a little bit, but down the line, when you start spending, they'll come behind you, oh, no, you shouldn't have did that. So in order for us to be covered across the board, I think we need to get our list together and then get a, to get a consultant right away, so we can sit down and have them review and say what we can do and what we can't do.
Anita, I see your hand, but let me respond to the request to consider retaining a consultant right away. Now, the consultant doesn't have any inside information that we don't already have, so they're still going to be waiting for...
Oh, okay.
For, you know, Treasury Department to release their, their regulations. I mean, they can, they can say, well, these things appear to be permissible, these projects appear to be permissible under what's already been published...
Okay.
Which we've already seen and read. So I, I'm not sure, Doug, we need to get one now until we get the regulations, the Treasury regulations, and then the consultants will be working off those and interpret them for us.
Dan, let me just be clear. There is some safe harbor in the regulations, and that's why people like the county have gone ahead. I mean, there is some safe harbor that if, at the time, you expend the funds, the regulations permit it, and they later change, there's a safe harbor, there's supposed to be a safe harbor in there. And Center County is not unique among the 67 counties across the Commonwealth spending these funds, nor would Patent Township be unique in spending their funds now. So I understand where you're coming from. I think at some point, you can engage these folks. I think they will offer you a very modest cost, because again, they've already done a lot of work for, for much bigger clients, when you think of the amounts that the counties have been getting across the Commonwealth. And as Doug pointed out, the funds that you pay the consultant can be paid out of these monies. That's clearly been, been determined. So that, I, I'm not discouraging you from getting them now or later, but I think depending on when you want these projects to start going, I, you know, we don't know what the federal government is going to do. And Larry's exactly correct. They pushed this date out, pushed this date out. There's a lot of things happening in Washington, and I think that's why, and I want to say it was August, Larry, but it could have been, I think when those interim rules came out, there was the safe harbor language in there, because there were a lot of communities that really needed to start using this money now. They didn't have the luxury, and I, I mean that in all sincerity, that, that our communities locally have had, while they've had some revenue loss and they've had some things happen, there were communities that really had to bump, bump up to get where they needed to go, so.
All right. Anita, thank you for your patience. Yes, you have the floor.
Sure. Two quick items. I wanted to build on what Elliot suggested about letting the public and recognizing how twitchy it is because of there need to be projects, but if there at some point could be like a Zoom, a e-blast saying, you know, if you know, if you have specific projects, visit our website to learn more about it, just to refer people to the website to build on the idea Elliot had. And the second point, and I'd appreciate the board's guidance here, like the proposals from the Housing Task Force and Pam's proposal for the Home Foundation, those are immediate prob, immediate projects that would make a big impact on real-life residents right now. And the Housing Task Force thought if you're not going to use American Rescue monies, maybe it should be considered for CIP. I wonder if on the list of, that all the supervisors suggested, can we start formulating a list so that if there is a consultant or someone else, they, they have this list to work from? And what recommendations would you have to help the, the proposals for these home support projects that both the Task Force and Pam have recommended, to keep the momentum going so it's not just hanging in the wind? Because if we got the first-time home buyers going, that's five families next year that could, it could make a real difference to, or some of the others.
Yeah, let me ask the board, of these proposed projects that were submitted by the supervisors that you see on your list here, including the addition of Betsy Whitman asked that we put the solar panels on the township buildings as part of this. Supervisors, anybody object to any one of these proposals? I don't see any objections, so Anita, enter. Go ahead, Betsy.
I'd like to remove one of mine, because, just because of other things we've been talking about, and it doesn't seem to rise to the level of priority, and that would be the scholarships for the pool, unless...
You're talking about Parks and Rec?
Right, just removing that. The Park Force Scholarship is fine.
Yes. And what do you want to do about that? I mean, it's, it's already on the list.
Oh, just, just remove it from the list that's presented on page, page eight there. It's one, it's, it's one that I had thrown out at some point, and it, I think it's a lower priority than others, unless we continue to have extremely warm summers.
Okay, what, my question was not that we fund all of these immediately, that, that's not what I'm asking. I was just asking if there was any reason why any of these are, should be questioned, any of these proposals, right now. That's my question right now.
No.
So no one, I didn't see any objections to any of these proposed projects, so there is a li, we have a list. It's not a list that's going to spend all the money, obviously. We still have to add more projects to it, but this is a list, okay? Elliot, you have a comment?
No, I agree with you that this is a list. I, I would like to add a, a project, but I have no idea what it costs to improve the pedestrian situation on North Atherton Street in the Commercial District, and it's something that we can't afford ourselves and wouldn't probably not do if we didn't have some funding to help us.
I missed what you were asking to add, what, what project?
North Atherton.
North Atherton pedestrian improvements, like being able to cross the street safely.
All along, you mean like at Colonnade and Enviro?
All those places.
All, all along North Atherton, improving pedestrian crossing safety, okay?
I mean, I just, can you elaborate a little bit? Elliot, what do you think needs to be done?
Well, how many people do you see even trying to cross Atherton Street? The number is minuscule, and the reason is because it's so dangerous. Now, the downside of doing it is the traffic will be slowed further because there will be a pedestrian, a walk cycle. But I think we need to think of that corridor right in there as being something that you see more in an urban area with heavy development than in the way that road was at first, where it's just a thoroughfare to get into town.
And even just putting sidewalks in part where there are no sidewalks.
All those different things, sidewalks, changing the light cycles a bit.
Okay, I, I mean, we can obviously engage somebody to take a look at it and see what could be done, and then, you know, they give us a list of potential improvements, and we could go from there. And we can, we can reach out to a couple of consultants and see what that might run up. I mean, obviously, probably spend as much as you want on that project, but...
Well, it can be an initial survey or give us some data, some feedback. Okay, Betsy, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to bring up again an earlier suggestion of perhaps making a statement of a larger issue, is we choose these projects, not that it would have to limit us in particular, but I suggested projects that somehow take action against climate change, and there are many that would fall under that umbrella. It may be a bit of a, sort of an artificial, another layer to put on, but it, it is an opportunity to make a statement. We could be looking at things to just make it more livable, that's a little bit more general, but, yeah, just an idea. My person would love to see climate action in there.
Yeah, Betsy, I'm going to suggest that to make sure you get what you want, is you propose something a little more specific than...
I hear you.
Just address climate. I mean, that could cover a wide range of things. If you want to, you know, I'm, you know, I don't know what it is, you know, provide subsidies for people to put solar on their house or something like that, but if you want to get something that you really desire to see done, you should be specific about something pretty, I mean, it should be, should be a fairly narrow lane of, you know, something that's going to address your goal.
Okay, and I was actually looking for it to be broader, so that we could include things like housing subsidies and transportation.
Yeah, at some point, somebody gets to make a decision about the specific project, so...
So not worry about the overall...
I think at this point, it's the board, it's the board's prerogative to put things on the list.
Gotcha. Okay, will do. Thank you.
Anita, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I have a question about the timing. Say, for instance, that the board wanted to take a bold step and say 10% of the money, which would be the 155,000 for the three housing programs, plus Pam's 10,000 for the Home Foundation, 10% of that for tangible, immediate housing programs, which I think might, as I read it, really speak to the requirements that I've read in the ARP, because it was really pandemic impact. I mean, the housing crisis has really been noted through the pandemic. If the board decided, let's go with those first, what kind of timing... what kind of timing could there be in terms of approving it and and, um, designating money for it? You know, can it, what do you see as, if that would happen, what would the timing be for having it be reality?
I, if I can just give my viewpoint, uh, if we're, if the board is prepared to to designate certain projects right now for funding now, you know, write the check before the end of the year kind of thing, then I think we should have a consultant review it just to protect ourselves. Uh, and the consultant may have to wait until we get the file treasury regulations, which is supposed to be coming anytime now, you know, who knows? But our supervisor, our solicitor already said there's, there's a safe harbor in the current rules. So if these housing expenditures do qualify under the word, current wordings of the restrictions on the use of the money, then I'm presuming it would be safe to go ahead and and do that. But I I would feel more comfortable if we at least get a consultant to give us feedback on that particular things. And and Anita, I I fully appreciate your your need to have those particular items decided on before you leave the board. Uh, and I agree. I think we we certainly can can, uh, can put money into those projects before the end of this year. Uh, Larry, go ahead.
So, um, I would agree that with you, Dan, that that if we decide to allocate or to, um, you know, appropriate these funds, this $160,000, that I would like to have a consultant tell me they do fall under the the regulations, the current interim regulations. Because, um, regulations before the Treasury Department are very, uh, interpret, you know, how you interpret them. There's still arguments over old IRS regulations that go to the tax court every year. Um, so I would prefer to have some third party tell us, oh, yeah, that does fall under it, so that we have some, something to back us on before we allocate any of this.
Elliot?
Well, I hear two things. One is that we should do something quickly and boldly. And the second is that we should have a consultant. So let's do both. Let's get this idea off the ground. Let's start working on it. If we're told we can't do it, well, that's another issue. We haven't crossed that bridge. We haven't seen that bridge yet. And I don't know which of the projects is is to go, but remember back to when we got the Wall Road Bridge. We were told that when the money comes back, we had to have a shovel-ready project ready to go. We did that. And we have to get, let's get a mind, whatever, I don't know, shovel or whatever. Let's get this thing shaped out as something that we want to do. And then go for it. And and yes, have a consultant so that we're guided in hopefully the right direction.
I agree.
Okay, agree. All right, so so the manager and and the finance director have their marching orders. Doug, let me just pass on to you and Larry about potential consultants. Last night, it was at the Cato meeting, the Center County Association of Township Officials had their fall meeting last night. And SITAC had two representatives there. They passed out information that they're, they're, uh, offering their consulting services on ARP funding. So that's one potential. I'm not saying pick them. I'm just saying as a possible, uh, group of consultants to investigate.
Yeah, I was going to reach out to the firm that assisting the county. I've got a recommendation from the county administrator and a contact, and I think PML might have had somebody also. I think PSAT was recommending the same firm that.
I just wanted to pass that information.
I will, I will follow up on that, Dan.
Any other discussion here?
Nope.
Uh, I will say one final thing is that I noticed, uh, of when, of the 206 responses we did get in our survey, the the category receives the highest number of yea votes was support business and workers directly. I had a fairly long conversation with County Commissioner Mark Higgins yesterday because I know the county has been putting lots of the money, the funds that they've received into supporting small business and, uh, individuals that have been negatively impacted by the COVID pandemic. And there are quite a number of of complications and issues, including fraud and the and the amount of paperwork required for any app, from any applicant for that. And and the magnitude of the administrative, uh, efforts to administer a program, programs like that to support individual businesses and and people was well beyond the ability of of our township. You would have to hire some some group. So I'm still at a loss of how we can, could implement and design a particular project that would address that particular interest of our citizens. So I'm still working on that. All right, moving on, consent agenda. There are, what, several items on the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to pull any of those items for separate discussion?
Ms. Burnett wants to come.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't see you stand up.
Valerie Burnett, Toffres Avenue. And, yeah, I wasn't sure if there was public comment on this.
Mm-hmm.
So I I do have a question, but first I want to thank Manager Doug for all the information compiled about the bikeway projects in the capital improvement plan and projects that were also not part of the capital improvement plan. It was eye-opening. Um, I would like to point out that COVID is what really laid bare the challenge that we have for walkability and bikeability, which made me become very aware that the trail was too narrow for the people who were trying to get places. Um, obviously, bus ridership has been impacted with COVID. Um, and, you know, as I've discussed before, there's a lot of interest in getting this trail worked on. Uh, it's heavily used. Um, I did want to point out another thing regarding affordability. Uh, as the discussion went with the fantastic affordable housing presentation, I'd like to tack on and mention a point regarding transportation affordability. Uh, there is a person who regularly regularly uses an e-bike for commuting, and over the course of three years rode over 10,200 miles and did a comparison. Uh, this person saved $1,177 in gas, but they also saved $3,539 in public transit cost. So it's actually three times more expensive for this person to take public transit than it is actually to take a vehicle. So our congestion problems are related to this issue. Um, anyways, so what I, what I wanted to ask about, I was just pointing out about the the COVID connection and the cost issues. And then you add into the climate action that people are wanting to get out of vehicles, but it's difficult to do. And, um, the big question has to do with that C2 section on the Bellefonte Central Rail Trail. Uh, Doug, I do know that you had pointed out that there's the, uh, one section, the C1, that is not, um, doesn't have public access yet, uh, or public right-of-way. But the C2 section is actually the most treacherous part in that part of the trail where the culvert is, is starting to wash out again. And so someone's already been injured there seriously, and other people have gotten hurt there, just not as seriously as as one. And so my question is, what's the cost of prioritizing and doing that C2 section?
I, I have it broken out somewhere, but I don't know. But I would assume it's probably at least half of that $905,000, so about a half million.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to point out, we talk a lot about the preventative, you know, safety issues, and we already know that we have a safety issue here. And it would be, I think, wise of us as a community to work on this and consider it a priority. And that was, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Elliot, you have your hand raised? You're still muted, Elliot. Okay.
I I agree with getting the bike routes done, but I think we also need to think expansively about other modes of transportation. For example, Betsy has talked about trains. Um, one thing I saw, horseshoe curve, a couple of weeks ago that I had seen before, but that I didn't realize what the possibilities were. They've got these pickup trucks that actually have train wheels on them and rubber tires. So they are able to use both the tracks and the roads for movement. Uh, what about expanded? We wouldn't be able to do this ourselves, but why not have more vehicles like that that would be electric, that could run on both types of surfaces? You could have automated transit. And people have to think differently than we have. If you look at, if you look at the kind of transportation we have right now, it suited the way we were back in the last century. But things are different now, and we need to do different things. And yet we're building the same things, and we're using the same tools, and yet we have much different needs.
All right, thanks. Uh, any other final comments before we move on? Okay, let's consent agenda. Does there any, any of these items someone wished to pull for separate discussion? Uh, seeing no hands raised, so I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved or?
Moved.
Moved and seconded Rob and Whitman. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, everyone voted aye. Motion carries. Managers report.
Item 9A, there was a, or there will be a free solar 101 webinar on October 28th. Folks need the RSVP for it through, uh, I think it's the Solar United Neighbors site. Click on the, uh, on the link in the agenda, and that'll take you to the registration page. Um, provided a comment or a copy of, some comments I spent, sent back to our emergency management coordinator on our pandemic response. There's a copy of the letter, um, that, uh, we mentioned was sent to not only Senator Casey, but Senator Toomey and Representative Thompson also on the reconciliation bill. That's supporting the passage of that. And then, uh, Mr. Hawbaker, Dan Hawbaker, provided us an aerial photo of the, um, Abington Equine Hospital, um, project. The kind of the gray rectangle in the middle is the start of the building. That's the foundation. Uh, just to the left of that is the Stormwater Basin. And the other area will be, uh, developed into a rink or an indoor arena. That'll be kind of, I don't have point here in here, but Pam and I were actually, went out by there today to see progress. And, uh, things are going along. We chatted with Dr. Radke a little bit, and, uh, things are moving along very well out there, so. By next spring, it should be a finished product. Uh, let's see, we had a, uh, we, item B, Campus Weather Service, a request for CNET sponsorship. Uh, we sponsored Penn State Campus Weather Service broadcast on CNET. We co-sponsored them along with Harris Township and Penn State. And we've done it for at least 25 years, as far as I know, or more. We don't always get a request from them, but I, they were willing to re, uh, to write one this year, so I asked them to approve it, to provide us a request. Um, that will be included in, it goes into our CNET, uh, calculation of what we owe. And I, there's no reason, uh, why we wouldn't do it going forward. But there was a letter from, uh, the student president of the organization and Mr. Cyret, who's their faculty advisor and a patent township president. So I wanted to include that. Um, we did get a date for bulk waste. It's December 13th. If you have comments, send them to Cog, the executive director, or the, uh, refugees and recycling coordinator. Turk or treat it Sunday night, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We are open on Veterans Day, and we are closed Thanksgiving and the day after. That's the end of my report.
Any questions for the managers? Uh, next item is committee reports. Anybody wish to, uh, comment on your committees in addition to what you may have already submitted? I will briefly say that the, um, the budget that the General Forum received Monday night, after the Finance Committee held its four budget meetings with the agency directors and the executive director, uh, came in with a municipality contribution that was 4.63% above the 2021, uh, budget municipal contribution. And I'll, just for your information, the original budget that we reviewed requested a municipal contribution that was 6.33% above the 2021 final budget. So, uh, the Finance Committee, in consultation with agency directors and executive directors, was able to reduce municipal contributions in the, in the budget that was presented Monday night. Patent Townships, uh, increase initially was a 5.6, 6.1% above last year. And that's now 4% above last year. So we, all municipality, uh, contributions were able to be reduced from their initial budget request. Any other questions or comments about that? Do you have, uh, future meeting dates, et cetera? Any other business to?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
There are no items that require any action for the scheduled meeting for next week, November 3rd. If the board would like to take action, to go ahead and cancel that. Everyone says yes, that's good enough for me.
November 3rd?
Yeah.
You want to cancel?
Yeah, there's nothing to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Uh, consensus is fine.
Is there any objection?
No.
No objections?
None.
Okay, so we will, the next meeting then will be November 10th, uh, to receive the budget. And the next meeting after that will be November 17th to. and the next meeting after that will be November 17th to, would be a regular meeting with a budget, a public hearing on the budget. We might do a couple other things on the 10th also, but.
Anything else?
Tyler had one item.
Yo, Tyler, Chief Jolly, go ahead.
Sorry, I couldn't get myself unmuted quick enough during the public safety portion, so I apologize. I just wanted to make the community aware of an incident we're investigating. Earlier this morning, we received multiple reports of theft incidents where mail was stolen from some individual's mailboxes. They looked like they occurred between about 1:00 and 3:00 this morning, and about 14 different residences were impacted. So we're just asking if anybody sees any suspicious activity, any suspicious vehicles in your neighborhoods, please reach out to us so we can come out and investigate. Also, if anybody has cameras on their residence, ring doorbell cameras, anything like that, if you've captured any footage of any vehicles that don't, maybe out of place or don't belong in the neighborhood around that timeframe, again, 1:00 to 3:00 this morning, really along North Oak Lane, Cornwall Road, Park Lane, and Shannon Lane in Park Forest, and then also along Weaver Street in the Woodycrest area. So if anybody happens to have any footage, if you look through and you see something, we'd be happy to receive that and to have that assist us in our investigation. So appreciate any help we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I don't believe there, we have a very big audience watching this tonight, so is there a way to expand the public awareness of this website?
Yep, yeah, I've actually, I've actually already provided this information to Sophie as well, so it should be going out on all our social media next door and probably on websites as well.
Great. Thank you. Any other final comments or business? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. Whitman, any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.